Everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where they stand, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call to order the regular public meeting for the Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, October 14th, 2025. Board of Supervisors did meet an executive session prior to tonight's meeting, discuss matters of potential litigation related to code enforcement and matters of real estate related to parks and open space and a public works facility. Before we get to public comments, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of our former supervisor Kathleen Huntsinger. Kathleen served Lower Gwinnett with dedication for more than 14 years as a member of this board and eight years on our park and recreational board. I had the privilege of serving alongside her and during her time here, she was deeply committed to our community. Her passing at such a young age is truly tragic and on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we would like to extend our sincere condolences to her family, especially her children and to all who knew and cared for her. Her many years of service to Lower Gwinnett will be remembered and appreciated. Before we go on to public comments, I would like to open up to any other board members that would like to make a comment.
It is, Danielle, thank you. Yeah, I wrote down a few things that came to mind when I heard the news. So Kathleen used to sit here beside me. She was a fierce advocate for this township. She was steadfast in her beliefs and opinions toward township governance. She had multiple accomplishments during her tenure with the township, including support of the Lower Gwinnett Business Community, the annual Pike Fest celebration in support of the development of Spring House Village. After I was elected to the board, she made a concerted effort to reach out to me, which I greatly appreciated. I was a complete novice and she helped me through her background of working on the board for so many years and helped me understand some of the issues with the township. When I joined the board, she was already on it and I think our working relationship was initially a bit strained due to our diametrically opposed worldviews, but over time I came to admire and appreciate her input. And she taught me a lot over the years. I really did come to admire her greatly. It was to her credit that even being outvoted by four Democrat votes, she was not hesitant to stand up for her views. She didn't let that intimidate her at all. And over time, I considered her my one good friend on the board. I was so very saddened to hear of her sudden passing. She was always so vivacious and I'll always remember her with great fondness. So, thank you Kathleen.
Thank you Tessie. Anyone else have any comments that they would like to extend?
Well, I can say that it's a great loss. This is a great loss to the township. She really cared about Lower Gwinnett, cared about the people of Lower Gwinnett. She appointed me to the planning commission and got me started in public service. I'll always be grateful for that. Though sometimes, not always. But she was really the definition of what you would hope a resident of a community would be and she'll be missed.
Thank you. Now we're going to open it up to public comments. This is for citizens' comments, concerns, questions for items that are not on the agenda.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good to see you all. Been on a sad occasion. I too served with Kathy on the park and rec board for many years.
Before you start, we just need you to state your name and your address, sir.
James Dicat, 413 Cedar Lane.
Thank you.
And she was always a pleasure to deal with, always good natured, always given us positive advice and helping us guide along the way as we built a lot of the parks in the township during our time together. So it's a wonderful experience. As you might expect, I'm here about the middle school chiller noise and I know that you are awaiting a report from your sound engineer, I believe, for the testing that took place back in September. And is there any expectation when that report's going to come in?
Yes, so we did receive our report on Friday, October 10th. So we just got the report. We will be sending out a letter to all the affected neighbors along with the report. The report does indicate that the chiller is now within our ordinance.
Okay, well then, let's be led right into the ordinance, which is the 66-year-old ordinance that we have. And I have to say, I hope you can acknowledge the fact that the scientific information, scientific analysis available 66 years ago to the dangers of noise to humans has to be out of date. And so as part of this process, this painful process, should we not address that? We have the neighbors who are not rabble-rousers. They're living with this problem. And even though this test may have met the current ordinance, should we not check whether the current ordinance is inadequate? And it's hard to believe that that's not the case. 1959. Can you imagine what they were dealing with? Said a noise ordinance in 1959 compared to what we have available now? So the other problem, as I assume is reported in this ordinance, is that it was, and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, was taken when the temperature was 63 degrees. Now, what compels an expert in that field to say, yeah, let's see how loud this thing is? Well, take it in the morning when it's 63 degrees versus the stretch of six weeks where we had 90 degrees, it seemed almost every day. And this machine doesn't just up its ante noise-wise to its workload on a normal mathematical basis. It's algorithms and exponential comparisons. So the temperature going up 30 degrees doesn't mean that sound's going up 30 degrees. It means it's going up 300% or some ridiculous number. And so this is what needs to be addressed. The township needs... Okay, so there's my pitch on that. And otherwise, it'd be nice if either the district or the township would, and this is more the district's position is, to get a health expert into saying, well, this noise has what effect on the students, staff, faculty, everybody that's on that piece of property? And we're going to be pushing that too, but I'm not sure the township would have a direct influence on that concept, but I do hope you take seriously the notion that maybe it passes the ordinance, but I would have to say, I'd love to have some questioning by the solicitor and/or me of the expert for, why are you giving us this information based on 63-degree ambient temperature? What's the point? Okay. The good news we see our neighbors is the code enforcement rejuvenation that you're doing and hopefully bringing that into the 21st century will help us in our cause because maybe some code enforcement needs to be done with the school district. And I see that the article sets forth some of the process that that would occur. Hopefully, if everybody starts getting the right scientific information, that won't be necessary, but if so, at least I hope the new system on the code enforcement will help us push it along. Any questions?
I'm gonna leave it over to our solicitor.
If there's anything else to discuss, I mean, we hired an expert, he did a report, we're sending it out. No point in debating something that you haven't seen.
True.
I don't think there's anything more to discuss.
At this point?
At this point.
Okay, good. We'll be back.
Always a pleasure to see you, Mr. Dicat.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
Well, I guess I don't think that you have been...
Just have to state your name and address.
Yeah, you have to say.
I'm Irene Lewis and I live on Montgomery Road in Lower Gwinnett. I guess that you have not been over to the school or on the grounds or to hear what it sounds like now with the acoustic blankets.
I have, I have.
Oh, okay.
I've been there almost every day.
Oh, okay, great. So then you know you can still hear it?
Yeah, I can, I know you can still hear.
Yeah, you can still hear it and I don't even know if this, but I took this video this morning. And it's not going to come across very well here. But anyway, it's from across the field, back by the, oh, I know what the problem is. It's back, it's across the field where I was standing when I took the video and just to demonstrate that you can still hear the noise. So whether it meets the ordinance numbers or not, you know, the point is it's irrelevant really if it's still bothering us. And this is when it's fall. It was 55 degrees this morning when this chiller was on and making this noise. So I just can't imagine what we're in for next summer if everybody's like satisfied that the problem is taken care of because the problem is not taken care of. And it's a nuisance. That's the bottom line. It's a nuisance. So whether it meets the noise ordinance, okay, I don't know, I don't know the details of the report, but it is a nuisance and it's still bothersome. You can hear it in the woods, you can hear it in the fields and then I can still hear it down at my house on the bend at Montgomery Road. So I don't know what we're going to do about this, but anyway, I wanted you to be aware.
Do you think that the blanket did some good?
I think it did a little bit of good. I mean, in terms of the noise in my backyard, it's a little bit duller. But I have to admit that like so in the morning when I could hear it in the beginning of the day, I can't hear it now. But by four o'clock in the afternoon, when it has heated up, I can hear it in my backyard again. So the blanket has done some good, but it's not resolved. It's not resolved. Believe me, I wouldn't be here if it was.
Yeah, and I appreciate your continuing to follow up on this to see how how it comes out. But it's right now, as Danielle and our solicitor said, we have a report. It's going to be sent out so people will be able to see what's in it.
There's a true nuisance. Your remedy is against school dish.
Uh huh, right.
The video or? The video? You said you have...
I do, but I have hearing aids in and it's connected to my hearing aids and that's why the sound is not coming home.
No worries.
Well, maybe I can fix that. I don't know. Anyway, I don't know if I can fix it while I'm standing here.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah, yes.
I'd like to support Irene's comments. Eric, 537 Montgomery Road. I'd like to support Irene's comments as to the public nuisance that exists, remains on the property. But I think more importantly, the, there's these middle schools integrity has been diminished, okay, as far as it's less safe, okay, and less compliant to the code than it was before the chiller was installed. That has not changed. They put a blanket up on one side. We have an improvement toward our property, but the noise levels on the grounds, okay, across from the handicap parking spaces are compromised. Those are, they're going to be very high levels of noise over there. That hasn't changed. If anything, it would have gotten worse because there can be some reflection off of that barrier back toward the entrance of the school. So the question is, is we look forward to seeing the report. If the report's simply addressing the lot boundary line, it kind of misses the point of children leaving our neighborhood, okay, and walking into an area that's going to get progressively noisier in means of, you know, it's going to be less safe for them to go to school because the noise will be greater on the school grounds than it was on our property. And that's been the case for the past, since 2018. And I think that's another issue, okay?
An issue for the school dish.
It's an issue for those hearing, damage to hearing is a cumulative issue. So people who have been exposed to that are already exposed and there's cumulative damage to them. So I think that needs to be appreciated at least, okay, and not, you know, saying it's done. It's glad, it's good that the risk has now been reduced, but it has not been fully remediated. This is a less safe environment. It's less green. That chiller's half the efficiency of the original chiller. That violates federal law.
You can't enforce that.
You're responsible for it as far as the building codes. The building codes require it.
I don't want to debate it, but we have an ordinance. We obtained an expert report.
That's different than the ordinance. It goes back to the building permit that was issued.
And we're not going to debate that here.
We do need to cover it, but that was one of the issues was we're going forward with the remediation in hopes to help limit that issue. So we put that in writing. We've asked you guys to come back and reassess that and we'll be wanting to come back and revisit that. Okay, so we look forward to getting the report. We look forward, we appreciate the effort, but we also want to be honest, okay, about if the scope was as limited, okay, was limited to simply looking at lot borderlines and looking at the ordinance and not understanding the nuisance that was caused and that has been documented, it remains, okay? So we still hear it and it's still annoying and it still exacerbates hearing issues that are in the neighborhood. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I have this working now. Now, if you want to see where I'm standing. I'm all the way across the track.
Okay.
And can you hear that right? Why, Irene? But anyway. I realize that this is really the school's problem. We're just here asking for whatever help and support we can get and I wanted to make you aware of the situation. So I appreciate your time and efforts that you have put forth so far and I appreciate your continuing concern and and well, support. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional public?
For a second?
Assume, Mr. Dicat.
We went through it, didn't we?
We didn't go through this point, which is you keep pushing the issue that it's the school district's problem. The school district has the problem, but the township has a duty to protect its citizens, including 30% of the kids at that school who work by that chiller every day.
That's what we do.
Good.
It's not just the township, Mr. Dicat. It's the state government and the federal government. You know that we're a, we're a, we have limited power and authority. We don't have, what, I understand what you're after. I understand the argument that you're putting forth, but when you address that with us, we can't address those issues. If there's violations of federal laws, Mr. Rudolph said, we can't possibly address that. So we are sympathetic. I've walked in the hottest days since the blanket was on. I walked the edge of the soccer field. I hear the noise, okay? I understand the concern. But it's, you if we don't have the authority to do it, I'm not sure what it is you want us to do. These are, if they're federal issues, they're federal issues. If they're state issues, they're state issues. We're the local township government.
You are. I called Montgomery County Public, okay? I contacted the county health department. They explicitly said that our township is responsible in this matter. Explicitly. It raised up to the head of the group and they, the note came back through the person I contacted to the...
Are you responsible for what part of this?
For the safety, okay, of the operation. Okay, if it was the public health concern as far as excessive noise needs to be addressed with the township, that's where we were directed.
Respectfully, I'll disagree with that. That's how, we don't have a public health department.
It's, it's...
How could we possibly address it?
Hey, listen, I'm just trying to tell you what, I'm just giving you my answer. I'll send you the, I'll send you the correspondence I've had with the county or I'll contact the county supervisory group and understand what's going on there. Okay, then with respect to the federal law, that's embedded in the building permitting and the inspections that are done by the township. And this is something that...
Those permits are state issue under the UCs.
But they're managed by the, when the township goes out to inspect sites, they sign off on the documentation as far as where it's chiller. They sign off to say, yes, this meets the IECC code. Okay, and that unfortunately, I think there appears to be an error there because this comes back to our central argument that this was not a replacement. This was a major alteration. It was presented to the township as a replacement. The reality and even in the documentation, it's reflected in the document.
By the township, we're done.
I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting that at all, okay?
Well, I thought you just said there was a matter, the permit.
That was presented to you. That was presented to you.
Okay, well, we can't do anything about.
I think what you can do though is you can push the county if you think they're responsible to handle this matter. The township can push the county more effectively than individual citizens can. You can also push the state, whatever agency in the state you think has some power to affect this matter. Why doesn't the township take on that?
I think that you have to take into consideration and understand that you haven't read the report yet. But if we've got a sound expert, an acoustic expert, who's giving us their, through their credential opinion, that this is no longer in violation of your noise ordinance, on what basis would we then go forward to the county and to the state and say that this is a public health emergency?
I think any person, I don't know, let me retract that.
And I want to make sure again that you're under the assumption, without reading the report, you're making this leap.
And yes, and I should not continue on this angle that I'm heading towards without seeing the report. I agree with that. Because otherwise we're arguing about facts that I haven't seen yet.
Correct.
Okay.
And I think you may misjudge any influence or power the Lower Gwinnett Board of Supervisors has with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania or Montgomery County. We I wish that weren't the case, but really we don't have any sway with any of these organizations.
We represent a constituency within Montgomery County. We represent a constituency within the state. We have the flexibility to go forward with concerns to them, but the prioritization of those concerns based upon a report that we have that indicates that they are well within our ordinance would be based upon complaints and grievances of our neighbors. Surely, we could theoretically bring this up to them. But I want to also articulate, it's not, according to what the expert is saying in the report, it's not in violation of our ordinance. So we would be then ascertaining their help on what basis. Like, that's the key here.
I think what's...
But I don't want to preclude you from knowing that you have access to the county commissioners. You have access to the county department of health. You do too, you also have access to the state and we're not in any way preventing you or discouraging you from moving forward, but I just want you to understand the vantage point that we have and what our responsibilities are limited to.
So I will await the copy of this report, but we'll be back in numbers if this report says it's based on 63-degree day measurement. I've said...
Look forward to seeing you again, sir.
The nature of the public nuisance. I think we're done.
Are we done on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're finished. Any additional questions or comments or concerns on items not on the agenda?
Hello, Eric Holmquist, 1500 Evans Road. This is an easy one. Nothing provocative this month. I just want to say thank you for the kind words on Kath and echo the same. A great friend and she was a tremendous help to me and I also appreciate the, you know, the little post you put on social media. I just wanted to ask just a respectful request if you'd also be willing to add another post to note her memorial service on Saturday. Don't need an answer, but just would love to help make the township aware of the service coming up this Saturday.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thanks.
Of course.
Thank you.
Any additional citizen comments, concerns, or questions on any items not on the agenda? Seeing none, move on to consideration for removal of a historic structure at Gwinnett Estates. I'm turning it over to a representative from Gwinnett Estates. You could just come forward and state your name.
Bernadette Kearney from Hamburg Rubin here on behalf of Axe Retirement Communities. And we've been in front of you for Gwinnett Estates for a couple of years now. And one of the things that has come up, we just recently received a letter from the township engineer that we're ready to we've received the land development agreements ready to get going. And one of the things that has come up is the whole Miller House. So in July, I sent an email to Mr. Stein in reference to the demolition, the proposed demolition of that house and then also to the township manager indicating that we, as you see in there, we gave you a copy of the plan from December of 2004, which indicated that the house was to be maintained. We have the structural assessment that was provided and the petition from the Gwinnett Estates residents. Donna Thompson and Robbie Sutton are also available. As Donna had indicated, as the Gwinnett Estates was built up, they realized that that whole Miller House doesn't have utilities. It's not really, it's not safe to go inside. So it really wasn't feasible and productive to be used. And one of the things that we have done and Donna has met with is the Wissahickin Historical Society has come out. They want to document the house before, if the board were to permit the demolition, they are starting documentation of that. In recognition of the home, the whole Miller home, we have also offered a contribution to the Wissahickin Historical Society of $20,000 from Axe. I don't know if you have specifically, yep, there's a petition from the members, but it came down to, as the years had gone by, as Donna said, it wasn't feasible to actually use the house for anything. It's just not safe. It didn't have utilities. Donna explained that they used to put little candles in the window. They were battery operated. So it just, it just wasn't a feasible, productive home or any type of use. So we're in front of you today to ask for permission to demolish the house with the understanding that we will allow the Wissahickin Historical Society proceed until there be, they couldn't give us a timetable, but we understand we have to wait for their documentation to be complete.
Just to be clear, the house isn't any, on any historic register?
No, it's not on any historic register, nothing like that, yeah. And that was recognized also back in 2004. It wasn't on...
And there's also a note on the plan about the house being preserved, so we would by declaration address that? Removal of that note?
Can you say that? I can't get my hearing aids to work right today.
There's a note on the approved plan.
Yes.
So we would have to somehow remove that.
Yes, yes, so...
Either through a declaration or... And then the record plan, something along those lines.
Yeah, I'm of the belief that you should do that because 20, 30 years from now, when someone's looking at it, they can figure it out. Yes.
I had a couple of questions. Why did y'all agree to this? Why did you agree to preserve it?
And I will say that the people here... the people here weren't there then. It was a different people at Axe. I think at the time Donna and I were sort of talking about this is they thought maybe they could do something with the house. But as time went on, one of the suggestions was, oh, if somebody came to visit their parents at Gwinnett Estates, they could stay in the house. But as Donna had indicated, that they already have guest housing on site for if you're coming to see your parents or something like that. So it wa, it wasn't really, as time went on, they realized it really doesn't, didn't make sense. It may have at the time when they did it, thought, oh, we could do this. But as time went on, it didn't make sense.
I guess my problem is y'all made a promise. You made a promise to preserve the house. Now, I wouldn't necessarily cared if I was on the board in two thousand and four, if you wanted to said you wanted to take down the house to build the apartments or whatever it was. But that's troubling that for twenty-one years or so, nobody's done anything with the house? And you promised that you would?
Understandable, which is why we recognize that, one of the reasons we're making the contribution to the Historical Society so that they could use that money for something that is amenable to preservation. This, this house just isn't amenable to that.
And are you gonna, do you plan to put something on the location where the house is?
That, if this, Robbie, I don't know if there were any plans at this point for anything there.
Build it perhaps, you know, some green space there.
Will you commit to keeping it green space? Look, look, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just, let me, let me just tell you what my concern is. And you don't have to, you don't have to decide now, but let me tell you what my concern is. You promised in two thousand and four to take care of it, which is, I assume what the board wanted at the time. So that it wouldn't be knocked down and you guys couldn't profit on building something else. And again, if you would have just asked then, it probably, I don't know if it would have been all right. So you didn't maintain it. You've saved a lot of money over the last twenty-one years for not having to maintain it. I suspect more than twenty thousand dollars. Hang on a second. And now I suspect you're going to want to knock it down because it's in disrepair. And if you're gonna build something and get revenue from it, that just feels wrong to me. You, you, and again, look, you guys are the greatest. I love what you do. I love your residents. I think you provide a tremendous service. You can understand how it sits a little wrong, right? Okay, I'm not, I don't, I don't want to yeah.
If I may.
Yeah, please.
Not at all. So I'm sorry, I'm Donna Thompson. So I'm I'm the current executive director. And number one, so you know, there has been money spent on the home, not actually probably in my time of six going on seven years, a little bit right before that house was painted on the outside, there was some exterior work done. We kept candles, candles were in there with the previous executive director. They put something in because again, there really was nothing on the inside. Just so it looked okay from the outside. You know, in these past six, seven years or so, yes, there had, nothing has been done inside or used. It's falling apart completely on the inside. And now on the outside is really starting to fall apart much more. And I think if I may, probably from an Axe decision above my pay grade, that, you know, there wasn't a lot of point at this point to be putting a lot more money into the property. I don't think the property also lends for really building anything on there. But again, that's above me, you know, and can go back to Axe. But where it sits and where it sits close to the road, again, we we're looking more, because if you can see the pictures and such, to remove that, but make it a nice space or you know, screen off some of the things that are on the property now. So, but I understand what you're saying. And that again, would go beyond me to to make another commitment because I won't be here in that time.
I, I understand. I mean, what, one thing that would be nice that we do from time to time is have some sort of conservation type easement where you're not, you're going to agree not to build on the property and you're going to maintain it as green space. I think it's, I'm just speaking for me, but I think it's worth taking back to the Axe folks and asking about that. I mean, and, and the donation is wonderful. I'm sure the Historical Society will be thrilled with it. But I'm, I don't want this to be a situation where we agreed to something, you didn't do it, and then you're going to build on it, even if it's just like a little something. It just would, it was kind of sitting wrong with me.
I understand. And so the residents have asked more, so there's some recreation space and things that they have there, you know, would there be an objection if it was some type of space used like that, not a building, but that the residents could utilize that, not just
You talking about active recreation or passive recreation?
I'm sorry.
Active recreation or like passive recreation? Like, are you thinking pickleball court?
No.
Or are you thinking like a bench where they could just
There's one there that's adjacent to it. No, but more like benches, something like that. Because when, you know, people are using that, that's all I'm saying.
Or like a pollinator garden?
I'm sorry.
A pollinator garden? I'm sorry. Can you hear me? Pollinator garden?
That's residents are looking at sustainable gardening and such at this point also. So I think there's, you know, opportunity for different things. I, I, I'm just asking if you would allow that the residents be able to utilize in a certain way and not completely restrict that for them, but not build something on it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think we should, this is, this is just sort of my personal take on it for members here tonight.
So this is gentleman's above my pay grade, so.
That's not true. That's not true. Donna makes all the books. So I'm, I'm Robbie Sutton. I'm from North Carolina. I'm the corporate director of construction services for Axe Retirement. So I represent the real estate department today. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, maybe get a little
I couldn't hear you in the beginning.
I'm sorry, I'm Robbie Sutton. I'm the corporate director of construction services for Axe Retirement. So today I represent, represent our real estate efforts. To address the maintenance piece, I think Donna did well. I think she reiterated the fact that we have done maintenance since we made the agreement in two thousand and four. I don't have the dollar amount today, but I could probably find out if it really came to. I would say that when we studied the development of the new assisted living building, which is adjacent to the whole Miller House, it's actually not on that actual foundation zone. There's nowhere else really to build. So we have, I think the whole Miller property is within the easement, right? Isn't it within the road easement? So you couldn't even rebuild. I don't think you can actually rebuild a foundation.
Yeah, it might be within the right way.
Yeah. So like, I, I think it's too close to the road where you actually couldn't build it on anyway. So there's no need for a conservation easement, in my understanding. And then
No, go ahead.
Yeah. And then secondly, like, the, this, the, the space is basically developed now to its ultimate limits of impervious surface. And so we would really have to go up before we actually disturb the ground again, in addition to rainwater mitigation and some other stormwater issues.
So it sounds like you would have no problem agreeing to not build on that area?
Well, I, I, by default, I don't think we have to agree or not agree. I think it's just already in
Well, you can certainly come back and ask for an increase in the impervious. I mean, it's not unheard of. And, and again, I don't, I don't, I, I don't, I want to make sure that you may be right about all those things. Let's just agree to it. And then Axe will agree to it. We'll record it. And then we won't have to worry about this ever again. Because I, I don't want to be in a situation where in ten years, somebody comes back and says, you know what? We could build right here. We could build X. I don't know what X is. And we could use the one wall of the whole Miller House. So therefore, we don't have to, you know, we have permission to do it, right? We don't have to start fresh. I just don't want that to happen. So let's avoid that happening and like come to an agreement where we all work it out.
While you ponder that though, I, I'm just, and I share a lot of Mr. Torsky's concerns. I guess I'm just confused. I don't, I really don't understand why you agreed to maintain it, honestly. But putting that totally aside, it appears just through documentation that we have that the township reached out a number of years consecutively, indicating that they were very frustrated and upset, I think, by the condition of the home. And I thought, I thought Bernadette had told us in the very beginning that no maintenance had been done to the home. Nothing had been done. So I guess those two things are in conflict, I guess, the way that it was presented to me today, or at least what you're articulating, that you have done things to maintain it. I, I just don't understand, and, and maybe you can explain, like after two thousand and five, two thousand and six, two thousand and four, when the, when, when the township reached out and said they're upset that you're not holding up this, your end of the bargain, they're upset about the condition of the whole Miller House, they asked you, they asked for enforcement as it related to keeping it, like, were there outcomes that were satisfactory? Because we have the letters that show that our township manager had repeatedly reached out and that there was no remediation or no mitigation about the state of the home.
I can double check the dates, but I think that's when the exterior of the property was addressed. I don't know that date of that letter offhand, but
Okay.
And probably I'm trying to think how
I mean, I can tell you July twelfth, two thousand and six.
Yeah, it, it doesn't matter if you slap a coat of paint on the outside though. I, you know, I agree with my fellow supervisors. I, I think it was I, I feel really a bit upset as a resident and taxpayer that this promise was made. The information that we have in our, from our manager is that repeatedly requests were made to up for upkeep on this property. And, and I'm sure that through the years, the board would have been amenable to doing something with the property besides maintaining that little building. But the fact is that you made this commitment. And you were repeatedly reminded of this commitment. And now you come to us today and ask to tear the building down because it's falling apart. It, it just doesn't ring very at, at least bad taste in my mouth. Because that means that any promise we get from a builder or a developer, you know, ten years down the road, they're going to say, oh, well, too bad. I didn't maintain the property, so I'm just going to tear it down. And, and so it, it really sets and I must say, this is not the first time this has happened. So that's probably why we're a little bit more upset with, with this situation than we might have been. But it, it really is you guys are probably not responsible individually, so sorry about this, that you're getting reprimanded, but it really leaves a bad taste in my mouth, the whole situation. And I, and I do agree with Mr. Torsky that if there is a way to set the property aside as a a piece of property, however small, that could have a pocket park on it, or something that is there I would like to say in perpetuity, but you know, as, as far as it can be conserved that many years. That would sort of ameliorate some of the bad taste, but it, it really is it really is not a good situation for residents of the township.
And, and you, look, honestly, you guys are great neighbors. We love having you in the township. And you know, we're thrilled with Axe and the communities that you guys have built.
A hundred percent.
It's just, and, and I get how during a long period of time, things sort of get pushed by the wayside. But as Tessie noted, this is, this happens more often than I'd like to think. And it's I said this to our manager the other day, people feel like they can make a promise to the township and then because boards change and it's not, you know, they can just sort of ignore it when I don't mean this in a pejorative way, but sort of the whims of commerce change, right? And I, I just think we want to just make sure that at the very least, you're, you're not going to profit from this.
Right. And, and, and I, and I appreciate that. And we're I think we can get information regarding what we had done with the property. It wasn't, hasn't been in my time, but some somebody still works for the company in the last ten years has information about what was done to the exterior. I think at a certain point, it was just determined, in fact, I spoke with someone with the Historical Society who said, oh, years ago, someone had looked at purchasing that home, but it was in such bad shape, they walked away from it. And there's somebody that's very active in Ambler and, you know, maintaining, restoring the properties. And so you know, in that conversation, you know, that person identified that it was sort of beyond repair in many regards inside. And so whatever happened beforehand, I don't know, we're trying to make right now. The inside has just continued to deteriorate terribly. Not, you know, nothing was done on that end. Steps are falling apart. It's not safe. But the outside, there was some things done to it. So I don't want you to think not. It wasn't just pain. I want to clarify that. We'll, we'll find out exactly and let you know. And it's not our intention to profit from it. It's to make the community nicer and, you know, looking nicer and the property, you know, more attractive for the residents that are there. And that's really, that's really where, where we are at this point. The residents have asked us for years. You know, why do we maintain that house? You know, why is that house still there? And that's why they're also on board with it. So we want to do the right
I get it. Yeah, no, I get it. And I know how you guys are with your community. This is again, my suggestion. Why don't you sort of take this back to corporate and take it back to your residents and sort of come up with a plan of what you're going to do with that land. I assume you want to take the house down and, which makes sense. It's, it's in such disrepair. Take the house down and, and come back with a plan of what you're going to put there along the lines of what we sort of just talked about. And in a way, you know, that, that you're comfortable with it, Mr. Sutton's comfortable with it, your council's comfortable with it, and that we're comfortable that we're not ever going to have to deal with this again. That, you know, to, to use Ms. McNeely's term, I, I'm good with perpetuity. Okay?
Daily perpetuity.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't want anyone else to have to deal with this and sort of go through the history of it. So let's sort of just put a cork in it, be done with it. I'm sure you guys will come up with a great plan. Does that make sense to everybody or?
It does. You know, I, I think we, we'd hope to come today to find some resolution of the matter. And also in, with in kind donation to the Historical Society for which, you know, they have seen, I, I think they have, you know, it, it seems to be agreeable.
Right.
So, you know, I, I thought we kind of came today with you know, some conclusion.
And we appreciate
Part of the way there.
And we appreciate that. And you are part of the way there. I think the donation to the Historical Society is separate from your engagement, I think, with us to some degree. While we appreciate that, and think that it is rightful to, to honor it as a historic, even though from what the documentation we're showing, it doesn't have any true, it's older, but no true historic significance outside of, it's an older home. Yeah. So I think we're, what we're talking about is moving forward based upon the commitment that you've identified previously back in twenty, two thousand and three, two thousand and four, remedying that commitment that you made to the township. And, and in addressing the concerns related to the township, I think it's really what our primary concern is. And ensuring that you know, that the space is is maintained in some degree or fashion as, as open space moving forward. And that it is something that the residents in your community can enjoy and we can ensure that they enjoy it. And it, and it's not a situation where you're going to come before us to develop. Okay.
And I think if you're not kind of willing to make that commitment, that troubles me. Because it means
It's more of a matter of, we can't make that decision.
I just, and I, and again, I'm not, I, I, I expected it would be more than, you know, I'm, I expected it, but I guess then it sort of sends a message to me that you're going to do something with the property at some point.
Right.
And that just would be unfair.
Okay. And, and some, what I had asked her, so you have no objection if the residents are using it in some way on the property, not building something or
Yeah, I like, I like that. I think
Something like that.
I think some kind of open space, you know, that like, what do we call it? Pocket park?
Yeah, a park, pollinator garden, some kind of, you know, passive or somewhat active.
For space to
I bet you the residents would love
Sitting gardens.
Yeah, I bet you they would love it.
Okay. So you're not opposed to that?
No.
Is that something we would need to wait for the next council?
I think, I think I don't think what is the, what was the
It was just the consideration for, for demolition. But I think without the articulation of how you're going to address this because it is documented or recorded that this is supposed to be maintained in perpetuity. But you're, but you're looking to break that promise.
Right. I think the ask was approve the demolition of the property. And I think we're willing to approve the demolition of the property with the conditions, but I don't think we're willing to do it tonight because we don't know what it is y'all are going to do with the property. And given the prior promise, I think
We're concerned.
Residents of Gwinnett have a right to know what you're going to do with the property. So I don't think we can approve it tonight. I mean, at least I, I don't, I, I couldn't vote on it.
Well, I mean, we didn't vote yet. I mean, so what I can do is we can have a conversation about if we want to table this for another meeting. Or if we want to move ahead with the vote. But I mean, if we move ahead with a vote and it, then we got to start over. I don't know if you want
I would make a motion to table this until
I would second that.
We can come back.
All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. I think we're going to table the motion, give you an opportunity to come back. And then
Meetings at our place, I think.
Well, we're coming to you for a town hall. We're coming to you for a town hall on the twentieth. Yeah. Yes, that's totally separate from our public meeting on the twenty eighth. I mean, you can, if you
Yeah, folks want to, if folks want to talk about it, that's all
Completely open to having the conversation.
On Monday.
The twentieth. The 20th.
Yeah, Monday.
Monday.
Yeah.
Or is that springhouse?
Talk about it.
Okay.
It's always fun.
So what, once we reach the correct person at Acts to ask about the, basically the recorded declaration, I'll reach out to Mr. Stein and indicate, hey, they're amenable to that and then get on the next agenda.
That'd be awesome.
And then when you, when you're kind of, you're going to come back with a kind of receipts and information as it relates to what in the 20, the years, the, the letters that we see as it related to the board at the time reaching out and asking and, and let us know what you did to maintain it just so that we can document that there was some efforts. Okay. We'd appreciate that as well. Thank you, guys. All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the consideration of a contract with Boyle Construction Management or Construction Management Services related to a public works facility. Included in the board packet is a memorandum from our project manager, John Fair. Do you want to, you want to give us anything?
Certainly. Good evening.
Good evening.
So as we get ready to take hopefully the next steps with the public works building, one of the things that after doing a lot of research, we heard consistently was get somebody on your side that is dealing with this process every day. And that's typically somebody like the construction management firm who's going to serve as our owner's rep. They are basically someone in our corner who is dealing with construction companies, architects, engineers on this process day in and day out. We're probably going to do this once maybe every 50 years, they're doing it every day. And their mission is to come through here and say, all right, as we're going and looking at architectural designs, what looks good, is this constructible? How can we save money? They're going to keep us on track, on schedule as we go through this process and constantly looking for ways for the township to, to improve a process, to improve a design, and most importantly, to save money and, and keep all those architects and engineers under control. Because even as we're looking at design phase, we're talking about an architectural firm, we're going to have site engineers, we're going to have structural engineers, we're going to have mechanical engineering folks, and the list is going to go on as we start doing soil testing and boring. So it's going to be a lot to coordinate. And it was very enthusiastically recommended by the municipalities and private construction companies to get someone like this. The firm we talked to that we're recommending Boyle Construction has a lot of experience doing this with municipalities, not just on the private side, which was a big attractor. They also have a lot of experience with RACP, so when it comes to grant side and getting our reimbursement as fast as possible, they're very good in there. And they're also not just one or two people that are here to look at your stuff. They're a hundred plus person shop that's got inspectors, architects. Our, our rep would be a professional engineer themselves. So when they're looking at this, they're not looking at one person's view. They're going to take drawing back to their team and say, hey, architects, does this look right? Hey, engineers, is this their kind of stuff we want to do? Then they're going to come closer to the time where we're hopefully getting to bid this job out. And we're going to be able to lean on them and their piles and piles of specifications they've done before to say, this is how we make this as tight as possible. So when bidders are coming to us, they're saying they can do this job. A, here's the really efficient ways to vet them. B, here's how we meet out the folks that aren't necessarily going to do as good a job. And C, how's, here's how we make sure what they build is going to be exactly what Lower Glenwood wants and needs.
No change orders.
And well, actually, that was one of their things, they advertise, the industry average for change orders is about 8%. And this construction firm, their jobs, it's under 1% is that their change order percentage. So yes, exactly, Mr. Torsky, that's what we're going for. That's how we save a lot of that money actually, is not necessarily in cutting the design as much as saving from changes later on, because they foresee these problems again in the specs.
Appreciate that overview. Are there any questions from the board?
No, but I, I really appreciate that you vetted several of these companies before picking Boyle. And it sounds like from reading their description that, that it's, that's a good choice. Did you actually interview them?
We did. We interviewed three different firms for it. We, we talked to five and interviewed three of them.
Okay. I, I feel very comfortable with your choice then. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Your recommendation is, is for us to move forward with Boyle Contracting Management. We have before us a memorandum as well as the other documentation from Boyle Construction Management for us to enter into a contract not to exceed the amount of $165,260 for Construction Management Services for the new public works facility. I'd like to make a motion to approve as there are second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much, John. We appreciate it tremendously. Next up is the consideration for us to authorize the issuance of an RFP for an appointed auditor. We have in our board packet a memorandum from our finance director. This is asking for authorization to initiate this RFP process. This timing is ahead of the five-year schedule, which is in accordance with our Resolution 202320 for professional consultants. Because the firm was appointed in 2022, was sold twice in 2025. Before the completion of our audit for 2024, we're asked to allow the board to affirm a select, affirm to conduct the audit for the fiscal years ending December 31st, 2025, 2026, and 2027. The RFP is, is included in the board packet. It has been prepared. Are there any questions from the board?
I have a question of the, our manager. Is there a way that, I know we talked about this offline a while back. If we have experience with any professional service, let's just pick auditors for example, and can we include in the RFP, like time is of the essence? Have they ever been delayed in providing? Like, and I know that happens all the time, but I know we've had problems with certain contractors over the years that it's delay, delay, delay. And I talk about it often, we've talked about it often. How do we avoid being in a situation where the lowest bidder is a company we know that is delay, delay, delay? How do we avoid that?
So with professional services, we, the township and board has more flexibility in who you select than you do when we have to go out to public bid and comply with all this. Then you have to take the lowest qualified bidder. Qualified's where sometimes there's a little bit, but only a little bit of wiggle room. Professional services, you do not have to take the lowest bidder.
Okay.
And we always include in our RFPs, we are not promising to take the lowest bidder. We're looking for the candidate who's going to provide the greatest value to the township. And, and honestly, I think so, and, and Melinda has drafted the RFP and she has in their deadlines for them to meet for the auditor. For, for the audit, in some ways, it's a little bit easier to address that issue now that we have specific deadlines. But the other way is, this is where it helps that people from all the municipalities tend to know a lot of people in other municipalities. So the references can really make a difference in just, you know, at least recently has, you know, who knows this firm? Have they been good to work with? Have you had problems? And you can get information like that.
Okay, that's, that's great. So with auditor, engineers, those types of services, we don't have to take the lowest.
Correct.
Okay, that's wonderful. Good to know. Thank you.
I think, and I don't want to speak for you, Mr. Torsky, but I thought you were also leading to, is there a way that we can penalize not timely expected findings or reports or, or documents that are guaranteed to us? I don't know if you meant that or not, but is there a way for us to indicate in our contract or in our RFP that, that is something that we'll engage in?
I put in deadlines in the RFP.
I saw the deadline.
Yeah, so I put those deadlines in. But what I also did was, which I think was the reason we, we, it was so delayed before is I sit down that a partner has to be in charge and on site, no one less than a senior accountant can be out here. I don't want a junior out here who doesn't know what they're doing and just moving papers around. And that kind of occurred. So I put that in specifically so that we can evaluate that. But I think the other thing we're going to look at when it comes through is the different municipalities that they did and probably make some phone calls to find out if they were timely or not.
So is it, is it not typical to add any kind of penalization for?
I don't recommend that. You're going to pay for that. So I, I, there's, I think there's far more effective and most cost-effective and service-effective ways to get to the point. As far as whether you can, I, I would defer to Neil, but I'm.
Yeah, in our professional services contracts, we always include a termination clause that the township has the right to terminate under certain circumstances or no circumstance at all. And that you don't have to pay for a product that's not been delivered on time.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. Any additional questions from the board? Any questions from the public? We have in front of us the authorization for the issuance of this RFP that's included in the board packet for our appointed auditor. I'd like to make a motion to approve as there are second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Next up is the, is the authorization to issue RFP for a township engineer and for a traffic engineer. Included in our board packet from our assistant township manager is again identifying in accordance with Resolution 202320, requiring a review and selection of process every five years for regularly used professional consultant staff are requesting this authorization. It'll be posted on the township website, distributed via email to local firms that provide these municipal engineering services. And a recommendation for award will be presented to the board in the time for appointment of the January 5th organizational meeting. Is there any questions from the board? None? Are there any questions from the public? Being none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the authorization to issuance the RFP for the township engineer and for the traffic engineers there are second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is the financial report for September 2025 included in the board packet. Is that, are any questions for our finance director?
I have a question. I think I know the answer, but I just want to make sure. In the tab that has year-to-date budget report with actuals, 22 to 25, the current year actuals go through 3Q, but the last column annual budget is the full year? Okay. You, you did, you did. I'm, I'm just sort of looking, you, you said that in the beginning and I'm, I'm, I just, I just want to make sure that I, I, I thought that was right. I, I, yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I just, I wanted to make sure that it was that consistent all the way through. That, that, that's awesome. Okay, perfect. Yep, yep. No, 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 I got you. So the annual budget is the full year and so we're where we should be. Okay, great. Thank you. That was my only question.
Just, just Melinda, is there anything that's jumping out to you that's concerning? I didn't see anything. Everything looked great to me.
No, nothing concerning. We're, our revenue collection is a little ahead of budget, which is good. But our expenses are right on point. And the, some of the things that are happening in the fall, we're expecting and those things are below budget. So as far as I see it, everything right now is copacetic and, and we're doing well.
Okay.
Right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any additional questions, concerns from the board? Any from the public? Being none, thank you so much, Melinda. Next up is the consideration of an invoice report for October 14th, 2025 included in our board packet. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the invoice report for October 14th, 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Included in the board packet was the minutes from our September 30th, 2025 meeting. Does everyone get a chance to review the minutes? Are there any questions, concerns, or comments? Seeing none from the board, are there any questions, concerns, or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from our September 30th, 2025 meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Included in the board packet as well is our supervisor liaison reports for us to review as needed. Staff updates?
Hi, so this was, it's been a bad week for Lower Glenwood. There was also another sad case with Jonathan Deck was an assistant fire chief for Wes Hicken. Young man, 35 years old with young kids, died of cancer in the past week. His family, his father owned Deck's, Deck's Hardware Store. Tyler died two years ago of cancer. So it's been a really rough week for a lot of people that knew these two individuals. Jonathan's service is Saturday morning. Starts at nine o'clock at Upper Dublin Lutheran Church. There'll be a viewing and his mass will be at 10:30. The fire services are a tight, tight group. And this loss is felt far. He was a great, great guy. Kathy meant a lot to me. If you look at the pictures, you see a woman on a board surrounded by men. And she was never intimidated. She told me when I became chief to speak up, let people hear your voice. And that's probably, I know I talked to you about this a little bit, Danielle, what I admired most, you didn't have to agree with her, you didn't have to see her point of view. She was respectful in giving her point of view and she never hid from it. There was a lot of, you know, there's been, in this country, there's a lot of controversy. And Kathy was never afraid to give you her opinion sitting there or on Facebook or on social media. She would debate with anybody. And was very kind in doing that. I'm friends with some of her kids. My daughter is friends with one of her daughters. It's just a bad day. So we'll miss them both.
Thank you, Chief.
Anyone else have any staff updates?
No?
Kathy's ceremony, or Kathy's ceremony. Kathy's funeral will be Saturday. Mass will be at St. Anthony's at 11:00 AM. It's not out there, I don't know if it's been updated, but there will be a viewing beforehand at St. Anthony's. But I know the service is at 11:00 AM at St. Anthony's. So, you know, we're going to be heavily involved in both. And they both deserve it.
And then, as requested earlier, the township page will reflect both of those?
Absolutely. And so I, I was just checking too, to see that Kath's obituary includes the, where the funeral is. I didn't know the time, so. Nine and 11, okay. I can't be as eloquent as the chief, but I definitely echo. It was, when I started here, my, my first day here as interim manager, Kath called to welcome me and informed me that she would be there on my second day to give me a tour of the township. Which, which was great. She was very gracious and, you know, welcomed me and helped me learn a lot about the township. And I appreciate that. And she always was like that. Thank you. Tessie?
So that, thanks everybody who made comments about these two individuals. It is a big loss for our community. On another point, I would like to thank the staff who were involved with the tree giveaway. I think it went very smoothly and I think all the trees were given away by the end of the time period. And the individuals on staff that were working were pleasant and helpful and everything went very smoothly. And so I'd like to thank the EAC also for this. Thank you.
Just, I guess just for all the families that have been affected and all the friends, just have thoughts and prayers for them with them.
Know it's somber, but I do want to just thank Michelle for the volunteer banquet. It was really outstanding. You always put a good show on and this was no exception. It was great food, great folks. At Philly's game, at Eagles game, had, that, that supports week. But the event was wonderful. Thank you so much.
I was going to also take a moment to recognize the success of our Lower Glenwood Township Volunteer Banquet and to extend our sincere gratitude to everyone who made it possible. We did celebrate all of the residents and partners who dedicated their time and expertise to our community, including members of the Township, Veterans Day, EAC, planning, park and rec, historic, investment, human relations, and all of our committees. Again, the day would not have been possible without the hard work of our township staff or personnel. And of course, Michelle, who organized and coordinated the banquet and made it a beautiful day as it always is. And it was a fitting way to honor our volunteers. And I think a lot of what we've highlighted today and some of the somber conversations we've had about the recent passing of former volunteers. And we think about both Jonathan Deck being a volunteer on our fire company and, and Kathy starting off as a volunteer in our park and rec. And the heartfelt thanks of the volunteers is constant readiness to serve and protect our residents under many very difficult circumstances. We're all, we're all volunteers and very grateful for everyone who decides to partake in public service and, and put our community and our, and our township at the forefront of their actions. It is, it is a very somber time to think about all of, all of what's happening, but also have to be grateful and appreciative of all that everyone gave for, but for them giving, we would not have the relationships and the interactions that we had for them. And I am greatly appreciative of that. And I am greatly appreciative of that. Um, so on behalf of the board of supervisors, I also wanted to express our appreciation to every volunteer who has ever given their time and strength to Lower Gwinnett. The dedication shapes the township and makes it an exceptional place to live. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.